Call this meeting to order six thirty-three. We'll start as usual with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody, this evening. I'd like to turn things over to the superintendent for tonight's celebration of excellence.
Thank you very much. It's an exciting night of honorries tonight. So we're going to start with our Bolton Center School Scholar Leaders. And our first scholar leader this evening is Sophia Bachan. So she Sophia is a quiet leader who is always willing to try her best, do the right thing, and help others in need. She is truly a role model to her peers and is esteemed by her teachers. Her dedication to her academics has earned her high honors distinctions throughout her middle school career, as well as award recognition for her writing and for her achievement in social studies. She is one of those students who can always be depended on to work diligently, whether it be in a small group setting or individually. Sophia has been a member of the BCS book club since sixth grade. She always comes prepared to club meetings with thoughtful questions and comments about each book to help facilitate the club's discussions. Outside of the school setting, Sophia is a member of the Coventry Crew rowing team. Sophia is very well deserving of the Cass Scholar Leader Award and like to say congratulations to Sophia and her family. Sophia, would you like to say anything?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Congratulations. And our next scholar leader this evening from Bolton Center School is Grace Osborne. Grace is an absolute standout both in and out of the classroom. She is always willing to participate and puts in extra work to always do her best. She has a natural desire for pushing herself academically and improving her work. As a result of her hard work in academic prowess, Grace has earned high honors in every middle school trimester in her time at Bolton Center School. Not only does she go above and beyond in each and every class, but she also is involved in many extracurricular activities. Grace was on student council and is currently part of the tennis team, guitar club, and the yearbook committee. Grace can also be seen leading the school announcements in the morning. Outside of school, she competes in gymnastics and has been part of a youth group. In eighth grade, she has demonstrated her desire to help others in the community around her by helping run a food drive within the school. Based on her service through this project, along with her desire and capacity to learn, Grace is also a well-deserving candidate of the Cass Scholar Leader Award. Grace, congratulations to you and to your family. Well deserved. Grace, if you'd like to say anything?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Congratulations. And now on to some big announcements as well this evening for Bolton High School. It gives me great pleasure and it is my honor to introduce the two thousand twenty-two Bolton High School valedictorian Samantha Sandic.
Um, I am not sure Samantha has joined us yet. In typical, in typical Bolton High School fashion, our kids do lots of things and there was a softball game. And the fact that I don't see Sam here makes me wonder if the game isn't over yet. So I know our other recipient is here. Why don't we move on to her and maybe Sam will get here.
Okay, sounds good. And honestly, if Sam doesn't join us in time for this part, I'm pretty sure the board would be fine with me talking about her once she gets here, right? All right. So now it gives me great pleasure and it is my honor to introduce the two thousand twenty-two Bolton High School salutatorian Taylor Mashad. Taylor has involved herself in different aspects of Bolton High School over the course of her time here. She has served as co-captain of the cross-country team and has participated in indoor and outdoor track as well. She has participated in National Honor Society, Spanish Club, the book club, and has
Good thanks.
Is she doing? Mrs. Denunzio, could you please mute yourself? Thank you. Taylor has participated in National Honor Society, Spanish Club, Book Club, and has competed in the American Rocketry Challenge since two thousand seventeen. She has received various awards for her excellence and achievement over the course of her time at Bolton High School, including the Baoshin Lam Science Award in two thousand twenty-one. Taylor's teachers have noted her exceptional dedication, leadership skills, and compassion for others that will set her up for certain success in the future. Taylor will be attending the University of Connecticut in the fall to study actuarial science. Taylor, congratulations. Well deserved. Well done. Good for you. Say anything, Taylor?
Thank you.
Looking forward to graduation, Taylor, right?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. Mr. Micali, has our valedictorian joined us? Do you see her on the list anywhere?
I, I do not see her on the list, so we'll just embrace her presence when she arrives.
Okay, so can you let me know when that happens? All right, Chair Brownell, so we're gonna move on at this point if that's okay.
That's fine. We'll be happy to recognize a valedictorian when she shows up and she's able to get away. So the next part of our agenda this evening is comments from the audience. Is there anyone who would like to make any public comments in the audience this evening? Okay, not hearing any. Do we have any additions to the agenda this evening?
I do not.
Okay, on to routine business items. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the April seventh, two thousand twenty-two Education Business Meeting.
So move to Ria.
I can second that, Chris.
Thank you. Chris, are there any questions, comments, edits to these minutes? I'm hearing nothing. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Sorry, anyone who's opposed? I will abstain as I was not at that meeting. Motion carries. Now we're looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the May third, two thousand twenty-two Board of Education Special Meeting.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you, Chris and Ria. Are there any edits or questions about the, these minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Sorry, anyone who's opposed? Or abstaining? Okay, that motion passes as well. On to Board of Education Committee Reports tonight. The only one we have is curriculum. To Chris, anyone wanna, you guys met, correct?
We did. I was waiting on Sue to jump in since she is the chair.
I apologize. It's a little distracting right now. Um, yes, we had a great, sorry, I'm just trying to gather my thoughts. Um, we had a presentation on Chris, refresh my memory. Totally blanking. Or Sarah.
No, then we had a social studies presentation.
Thank you. Yep.
To up, do you want me to just go through it? Okay, we, we, we had a an update as to where we are with the K four social studies presentation. Just to update the board, since we had started this project before COVID and in transition with a new director of teaching and learning to just give everybody an update as to where we're standing. We also had some presentations for new spelling program that will be presented later this evening and a new high school course and an overview of work we've done over the years in diversity, equity, and inclusion. I miss anything, Chris?
Nope. That was it. Thank you.
And sorry about that.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, we can move on to BHS Student Representative Reports.
All you, Em.
Sorry, I was taking a test. I had to move over. Okay. Um, since this is my last report, I thought I'd talk about how the Bolton School System shaped me and my peers to people who we are today. My family and I have been in Bolton for about five generations now. And one of the reasons why we keep coming back is because of how great the school system is. My grandfather, he went to school when it was located in a little building on School Road. And now it's a garage, but that's where he went to school. And my mom, my aunt, and most of my cousins went to the elementary school before BCS was built. And now my sisters and little cousins are, and I are all currently in the school system. My sisters and I have been here since preschool and it's changed us all for the better. I made friends and memories that will last a lifetime, but more importantly, I learned the skills I need to leave the school system and live a successful life. The seniors have a task of finding out what our next move in life is going to be. And it seems really daunting at first, but there's so many ways that well makes it easier. Firstly, my freshman sophomore year, we had college fairs where we learned about different colleges and what they had to offer. So it kind of got us thinking about where we might want to go. Another great thing is that anybody can have a leadership position in Bolton, no matter what their interests are. Whether it's a team captain, student council, National Honor Society, a club leader tutoring, or volunteering. There's always something that students can do to get involved in. Bolton has volunteered, has volunteering guidelines that we each have to meet before we graduate. It usually is fifty hours, but with COVID it got modified, but we still did have to do some. And if we're part of the National Honor Society, we have to get ten more hours to graduate. Personally, I have been team captain for cross-country basketball and basketball for multiple years and the National Honor Society Vice President and a Co-President of the Donut Club. And if you talk to any student, they almost likely answer that they have at least one of these leadership positions. One of the reasons that so many students get involved is because of the school size. We have a lot more opportunities to get involved because in bigger schools, you'd have to run against people and usually we don't have to do that. Different colleges, oh, with the college fairs, it actually helps us like with what guidance has to do too. We all met with guidance at one point or another to talk about college and our future goals. And they've been so helpful during this process and it really helps us and make it as smooth as possible. There's been many times with myself or others that there were issues with applications or that we're just stressed and didn't really know what to do. And time and time again, the guidance department has always helped us. Now we're committed to our next destination and whether that be college, the military, or trade. Two other senior requirements are taking AP Gov or civics during our, and doing our senior capstone project. Taking those classes teaches us about the United States government and how it works and how it was created. It puts us right back on track and to make informed decisions in our life. The capstone project is completed in our senior year and includes a research paper and a project portion where we can put what, pick whatever topics we want. Personally, my research paper was about different types of working dogs and what they do and how, why they're important to the society. And my project was to train a therapy dog. Other people's projects included building rockets, coaching teams, learning how to compost, and learning how to play an instrument. It's important because it focused all the, it helped us all to be focused and disciplined and even helped us find new connections. Because of this project, I learned so much about dogs and how they act. And I even helped teach a therapy dog class. And now I have connections with that therapy dog company that I can keep doing when I, when I get older. Along with volunteering, all students must also have to complete a job shadow. This helps us narrow down, marry down what we may think we're adjusted for a career one day. This helped me decide my path by shadowing different people in the medical field, an ophthalmologist, a physical therapist, a physician's assistant, and acupuncturist. The juniors and seniors have an opportunity to also earn AP credits and ECE credits, which would earn credits for college. There are a lot of different topics, areas to choose from, and there's even more next year. The credits will transfer to almost any college and it helps us lessen our course load and have an easier freshman year and even a jump on college. Most of us are able to take these classes and it also looks really great on our resume.
Great job. Thank you, Em, very much. Go back to your test quick. Good luck.
Do we have our student representative?
Um, no, he's not here tonight, but I do believe we have a parent who was having some technical issues under comments from the audience, so I don't know if you wanna what you want to do with us.
That's fine. Go ahead if you'd like to make a comment. You have three minutes.
Oh, thank you very much. I won't take three minutes. This is Sue Denunzio and I'm representing a lot of the senior parents who we were having trouble finding this link and I think that there may not be so many of them that were able to find it. We just wanted to, to stress our concern about graduation night and we're hearing that there's going to be a limitation to tickets. And we're just hoping that we will, you guys will consider extending the tickets from six to, to more than that, considering that graduation's outside.
So just so you know, um, thank you for the comment. It's not a question and answer period. That's not what's allowed under commentary. So thank you for the commentary. And I'm certain that Mr. Micali will be reaching out.
Thank you. And I know that there were other parents who, who also wanted to share their, their concern about that. So is it, is it recommended that we reach out to Mr. Micali or the Board of Ed or who?
Well, I think we gotta go ahead.
I would say all the above, but.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Let's move along. Community meeting reports. Has anyone been to any meetings they'd like to share?
Sure, I can go. Attended the Bolton Scholarship Fund Meeting in April. No, May, sorry. Keep getting confused because we changed our date to the first Wednesday of the month. So the May meeting was the most recent one. Our applications have been closed for this year's scholarships. So we're now in the process of reviewing applications and making determinations. And the scholarship awards will be announced at graduation this year. I also wanted to bring up under community meeting reports. I know several, several of us attended the public hearing on the budget. But I just wanted to mention that one of the comments that was made during the budget hearing related to the issue of the student population in Bolton Public Schools and the fact that it has been going down. We were challenged by the town's person who made the comment to come up with a plan on how we were going to address this issue of continuing declining enrollments. So I would certainly want to encourage my fellow board members to look into that further at a future meeting. It is an issue that I've also been concerned about and I think we owe it to the taxpayers to be looking at it seriously. That's all.
Thank you, Chris. We can consider that for future. Um, I guess also there was another community meeting, which was a town meeting where we took some money that had been for door locks and applied it to our septic failing septic system. So that passed. Was there any other community meetings that anyone else can think of? Okay, hearing nothing. Turn things over to the superintendent for the superintendent of schools reports.
Mrs. Hacked, if, if I may, our valedictorian has arrived.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, we're gonna, hi, Sam. How'd it go? Did we win?
We won five to four last inning comeback. Awesome.
That's awesome. That's a great day. All right. So everybody, it is my pleasure and my honor to introduce to all of you the two thousand and twenty-two Bolton High School valedictorian Samantha Sandic. Congrats, Sam. So Sam has involved herself in many aspects of Bolton High School from being captain of the varsity softball team to co-chair Biggs and Littles program, as well as participating in National Honor Society and serving on various school committees. Sam is committed to equality and inclusion and has spent her school career volunteering with various local and national social justice organizations. She has been the recipient of the Frederick Douglass and Susan B. Anthony Award, the Joseph Shanahan U.S. History Award, as well as other awards for excellence and leadership. Sam's teachers have all spoken of her honesty, determination, and passion that will help her succeed in the future. Sam will be attending Smith College in the fall to study government and Spanish. Sam, you worked very hard and this is a well-deserved honor. Congratulations. Good for you. Would you like to say anything, Sam?
Just thank you to the staff and Board of Ed and all of the teachers who made it possible for me to achieve so much. I can't thank you enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations again. All right, now we're going to move to superintendent of schools report, if I could, please. And our first up is a math curriculum update and I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Malinowski.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, as Mr. Micali is getting this up. We are on, uh, every five years, we take a closer look at various curricula throughout the district and this year we took a closer look at our math curricula and this is a more complete update of what has changed over the past five years since our last big report. With me this evening, I see, uh, the Alicia Rose is our six through eight core leader who's been able to make it this evening. As is Diana Mikalochi I saw on the chat, but I'm sorry, my screens have changed and Renee, Renee Midford, I'm not sure if she could make it this evening. Renee is the academic core leader for high school and Diana is our K-five leader. Tremendous team and we are very grateful for all the hard work that they do in guiding us and helping make decisions. Next slide, please. Beginning at the high school and I will just say that I'm happy to report that we are feeling comfortable, comfortable in all, at all levels about being aligned to our Connecticut Core Standards. As we know, this was a year of re-engaging with academics and school and that has been a close study at all levels. So I won't keep repeating myself. We also at the high school have to consider other national standards such as AP Core Standards. And at this time, our UConn ECE standards. We have two courses that we've taken up over, um, since we've met a few years ago, calculus and statistics. And this evening we will be proposing a third class, UConn Elementary Discrete Mathematics. Uh, the students in high school who receive college credit for, um, AP, when they pass an, their exam at a specific score and is at the discretion of the colleges if they choose to accept that credit. Where a UConn ECE course, UConn guarantees that credit with the passing grade. So it's, it's excellent, the amount of work that our teachers and department have put in to offer more opportunities for our students to receive these credits and have some, some options for being such a small department and small district. And I do have to say to be a UConn ECE teacher, you must get approved by the college. So it is not just, oh, hey, we want to do this. There are extra steps. So I'm very grateful for our teachers who are willing to step up for that. And of course, AP has its own training as well. At, um, our status, we're always on ongoing revisions, looking how we can better our curriculum and our instruction. As we move along, we are now at the point of being able to be current with post-pandemic status where we are with our topics and continuing on to align with transferable skills and Bolton's Portrait of a Graduate. In grades twelve, ten through twelve, you can see a list of our electives that we also offer. And moving on to grades eight, six through eight. So six through eight during their pandemic years did roll into a new program, the Ready Program, which was a continuation of the K through five program. Grade six had a partial rollout and truly a full rollout this year and seventh grade also rolled out Ready. Eighth grade, uh, they used, uh, the directive was to start the training. However, our eighth grade teacher dove in and has also rolled out for our non-algebra course ready as well. It's been a tremendous resource and we've been working on revising the units and atlas to, to align with the program. And certainly the teachers were able to attend PD for the program. Always looking at S-BAC and making sure our work aligns with that, analyzing our data. At BCS, we have the opportunity for the win time, the what I need now. And the Ready Program, what's wonderful about it and for families who've seen it at home, it has a robust online portion which allows students to have a personalized path, which is called My Path, which aligns with their assessments and what the teachers are seeing. And then on go, moving on to K-five. This is our third year with Ready Math as our main resource. This year, we really spent a lot of time looking at fact fluency and our instructional practices with best practices and a few new supplemental online programs to help us with that as well as utilizing My Path. And the ongoing work again continues with the work in our Atlas. And this year was a big focus on assessments and revisiting our practices and how we consider our big ideas and learning targets for each unit. And because of COVID, especially in the K-five world, we've had to revisit the unit sequence again in its alignment. And we are feeling confident that we are feeling more pre-pandemic-like than I was able to report last year. Is there anything that I've missed from my few academic leaders who are here or any of the building administrators who support us in this tremendous work? Hearing none, I do want to thank them. Uh, we really can't do that, this work without this extra effort. This is a stipended position outside of school hours and we are very grateful for the energy and the learning and the professionalism of our leaders and the ongoing support of our building administration. So thank you very much. And that concludes my report on math.
Thank you. Any questions for Sarah? Or the leaders or principals on this? Okay, hearing none. Good. Thank you, Sarah, very much. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Giard for an update from BCS.
Good evening. Cover three things tonight, end of year events, a little bit of information about eighth grade promotion. And then we'll end with the, talking about the successful student-led conferences. For end of year events, we're currently finishing up smarter balance testing with a few makeups left to complete. Everything has gone very well. Technology, every kid's using their Chromebooks. So you know what I mean? You're always a little on edge, but everything went perfectly. And we have a few makeups that we're going to finish the end of next week. Our fifth and eighth graders still have NGSS testing that's going to take place on May twenty-fourth. And that is a one-day science test. We then jump into June full steam with two parent events on June first, which is the incoming kindergarten parent meeting at six PM on June first, and then the fifth to sixth grade transition meeting, which is at seven PM also on June first. Both events were held via Zoom last year and it was overwhelming response from parents that they wanted even post-pandemic, when we get to that point, to keep it via Zoom. So we're going to try it again this year. Um, on June tenth, we will have our academic awards assembly, which is for grades five through eight. And that's going to be at nine fifteen AM and that's on June tenth. Last year we did it via Zoom as well and got some good feedback. And we're going to have it on Zoom again this year. And the last day of school is June fifteenth. Our promotion plan, uh, the eighth graders are extremely excited. We have some end of the year activities coming up. Promotion is scheduled for June fourteenth at ten AM at the high school. And a huge thank you to Mr. Micali, Mr. Batrimovich, and the VHS custodians for hosting BCS again this year at the high school because it's an undertaking to get everything set up for that early in the morning. BCS again this year at the high school, because it's an undertaking to get everything set up for that early in the morning and to have us over the day before for practice. So a big thank you to them. Like I said, the promotion will be at 10:00 AM. It's a ticketed event, and we'll have a photographer. It'll be recorded and also streamed on YouTube. The ring date is going to be the same time on June 15th, same time and location. Student-led conferences, we were actually able to see it through this year. We had, we were just about to implement them in March of 2020 before the pandemic hit, and we were able to see it through this year. We had the actual conferences via Zoom, which went really well, and that was on March 17th and 18th. We had ninety-eight percent of students run their own student-led conference with their crew leader and their parent or guardian present. The students reviewed the goals they created in the fall and the work samples that they collected that supported their work towards their goals. The goals included two academic goals, a habit of work goal and a transferable skill goal. The goal is directly connected to the Portrait of the Graduate and the work that we're doing at the building level. We surveyed after student-led conferences, both the students and the parents, to get some meaningful feedback so we can be even better next year. We had forty-eight parent responses on the survey with eighty-one percent of the parents saying that they felt that the student-led conferences helped them to understand their child's strengths and challenges as a learner. So I thought that was an extremely great feedback. The eighty-one percent of parents felt that they saw a meaning in the student-led conference. On another question, eighty-three percent of parents selected that they either agreed or strongly agreed that they had a positive experience with student-led conferences. On the student survey, we had one hundred and sixty-three responses, and one hundred and thirty-two of the one sixty-three, which is eighty-one percent of the students, said that they put their best effort into preparation for the student-led conference, and sixty percent felt that they understood themselves better as a student and learner because of this process. There were also open-ended questions for both parents and students, and we're reviewing those responses. We already have some great ideas to build and be better for next year. And we put together a short video that Mr. Maselli is going to queue up in a second that highlights the student-led conferences, and I hope you enjoy.
All right, Mr. G, I think I've got it. Wave me off if you can't hear it, though.
No volume. We're not hearing anything, Joe.
Okay, no problem. I think I know what it is.
Welcome to my conference. I'm here to tell you what I am great at, proud of, and how I grew this year. I will share my habit of work and scholarship, a transferable skill, one strength, and one area of focus. At the end of my conference, I will give you a chance to ask any questions you may have, and I will ask you for some feedback. So we've been working on a presentation and collecting work samples for a while, and now I get to present it to my parents and to show them what I've been working on and how I've been doing.
Student-led conferences was a concept that came out of building the Portrait of a Graduate and building student ownership of their learning and the learning process. And they set four goals throughout the year, and they collected work that they're already doing in their classes, connected to it. So it's saying, what was the objective of the project, the feedback they received from the teacher, the growth that they've experienced? And that's where the value in this comes from, is that they're telling you the story behind the assignment or the work connected to that goal and how they grew in that area.
Thank you, Ms. Osborne, for joining us remotely. I can tell a student that maybe he's waiting last minute or something like that, and that goes right over his head. But when he has to reflect about what his grades are like and what his work habits are like and how he can improve, that is going to stick with him much more than his teacher telling him.
I think it was great. It's nice to hear from her perspective how she's doing. Ultimately, you know, if she doesn't feel she's doing well on something, I want to hear that from her, not necessarily from her teacher. She needs to be accountable for her learning, which she definitely is, and that will only help her improve next year as, you know, the independence in learning and expectation will become greater as she goes to preschool. So I know that if I have questions for a teacher, Dan and I can call and find a time to have a meeting with any of her teachers if we need to. But again, I just feel like it's so important for her to be able to tell me how she's doing and be proud of that or be honest, you know, I need to improve in this area. That intrinsic motivation to improve and learn is, is really important for students.
Thank you.
And I swear, they were virtual. It's just that Mrs. Osborne works in the school, so that one actually was in person, but the rest were via Zoom. It was a great event.
Thank you. Any questions for Darryl? Great job. Thank you. All right, on to curriculum update, and I'm going to turn it back over to Ms. Malinowski. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Turning it over to Mr. Maselli for a Bolton High School update. Sorry.
No problem. First, I wanted to personally thank Emily for her detailed reflection and a short explanation. She was not interrupting a Bolton High School test. She, like a handful of other Bolton High School students this year and in the past years, have taken upon themselves to take the EMT course. So Emily actually stepped out of her EMT course, where she's taking it to present to you tonight, because she needed to keep up with that work. So I'm really proud of, of everything that she's doing there, too. And I think she really captured where our class of 2022 is right now. They've been an amazing group of students, keeping up a great attitude, even in the, in the face of some difficult years. Just a quick note to throw out about class of 2023. As you all know, we do have our students participate in standardized testing, including the PSAT and the SAT. One of the components of the grade ten PSAT is the possibility of being recognized as a National Merit Scholar. Although we don't know if any of our current juniors will be finalists, we do know that some of them qualified as semifinalists. And as I mentioned that, because a semifinalist actually means they scored in the top three percent of all students in the nation taking that test. Sometimes we have one semifinalist. Rarely, we've had two. This year, we had four. So fingers crossed that at least some of those four members of the class of 2023 are named as finalists, and I'll update the board on that. A few months ago, our grade nine teachers presented to you about Team Twenty-Five. We're so happy with how that new model to support incoming students work this year. We are continuing that model with the class of 2026 with a few modifications, things that we've learned. Our grade nine teachers have already begun communicating with the grade eight teachers at the center school, and we are excited about official 2026 kickoff day, which we have scheduled for August, the week before school opens. And as we rapidly approach the one month mark to graduation, we are getting ready. We're going to use a similar format as we did last year, incorporating scholarships and awards into that outdoor ceremony for commencement. And I have been coordinating with Bolton Scholarship Foundation and project graduation, project graduation families to make that all happen. And we plan on live streaming that event on the VHS YouTube channel.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Maselli? Okay, hearing none. Now I'm on to Ms. Malinowski again for the curriculum update for the last time.
For the last time, yes, thank you. So hopefully, every board member was able to get a packet that looks like this is just a clip of what you should have in your packet, which is a about two and a half page update for each content area as to where we stand with standards and assessments and some of our practices. I am happy to report that, as always and even this year, which I know at various times throughout this year, it has been a challenging year to keep up with every level of professional responsibility, and our teachers yet again just rose to the challenge of making sure they were able to keep up with checking in with where we are with curriculum updating, making sure our documents and our resources are reflecting what it's like to be back in person versus where we were with COVID. We tried to document that. So as things shifted and changed throughout, that we were able to have record for, so that it's fair and equitable, and everybody could see where we are within the district, and we can provide our best practices for the kiddos. So throughout each one, I've identified the standards that the different content areas are aligned with, and then the different assessments that go along with the different contents. Also added, and I kept from last year's report, because it's worth recognizing as then the number of online resources that we now implement for assessment practices, especially some, which are also instructional. But the teachers and the, did go through and add which ones they really do use for their assessment practices. One of the silver linings of our remote time and, and COVID has been this tremendous understanding of, of things such as Jamboard, Google Forms, and now how do we use that appropriately? So that when is it best to do something through handwriting and through more pre-pandemic styles versus some of the platforms that are responsive and give immediate feedback to the students? So for each content area, we also added the online resources, which again are greatly supported by the board's budget, and we thank you for that ongoing support. And I do thank our teachers for being very thoughtful through this process. So instead of going through every single one, are there any questions that the board may have for me? Monica is on the call and is ready to take over the reins. We've been able to meet, and so thank you very much for your support with this ongoing curriculum work.
Thank you, Sarah, very much for the last curriculum update that you will give in your very amazing career. And now on to your last professional learning summary.
Great. So going on to the work that we continue to do, the chart, again, this is a snip of the document that was sent to the board members of the various types of professional learning that our staff engaged with this year. All of our professional learning is aligned to goals, are both district goals, school goals, you know, and certainly our goals have to be responsive to when there are mandates. So some of the things might be more mandate-driven, but that's very few and far between. No, we need to be responsive to the state, and so on some level, we are responding to our goals in that way. The majority of all PD this year remain to be virtual for obvious reasons. And in that way, some PD was actually more available because it became late afternoon, short meetings versus a full day or having to leave to go to a meeting. I anticipate next year, we'll see some of our partners, such as Crec and the other Ressks around the straight state, offering PD opportunities in a virtual format when they're short. And that opens up some doors for our teachers and administrators as learners. There has been a slow transition to a few in-person PD opportunities, and next year, we anticipate that we will, you know, fingers crossed, everything goes in that direction. We will be seeing more opportunities for that. So again, I really do want to thank the board and the community for their ongoing support of the teachers and their learning so that we are able to provide the best education possible for all students here. So with that, any questions about anything on our professional learning? Again, thank you very much, and I have to say, as that is my final report about curriculum professional development, which is a huge part of my role, I am very grateful to this board and to the town for the amazing support for the learning of our teachers, because it really does show how the students are the total focus. So again, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, very much. And finally, our strategic plan update for the year.
All right. Kristin, you saved everything for the last for me, huh?
I did, Sarah. It's a whole ball of wax here.
All right, well, that's okay, because Joe and Darryl are going to help. Which, you know, can't do any of this work without our partners here. So as always, our work is grounded in our Portrait of a Graduate and our strategic goals and which are highlighted here. So at the, our first goal, focusing on student success. At all levels, the PK-12, we focused on all the bulleted items that are listed here. And this has really been accomplished through the embedded PD and learning that we just looked at. And again, the support of the, the board and the town for our eight early release days that allows us to do much of this very important work. Turning it over to Mr. Maselli.
Uh, thank you. So some of the things that we worked on this year was, you know, that flexible time that we call connections. We kind of always could take a peek at how we can improve that. That was part of our, our work this year. We actually have an ongoing revision of Capstone. Capstone looked different this year than it did last year, and next year, there's already some changes that we're making that, you know, we think are going to improve things. Primarily, the biggest thing that our board members might notice is it's, it's starting sooner. The pathways for responsive intervention, RTI, to, you know, focus on credit recovery, mastery and support, you know, in all areas, really making use of all the resources we have to support students and the continued implementation of that, you know, all that digital work that Sarah referred to earlier and the Team Twenty-Five work that I mentioned earlier.
And all the bullets listed for BCS under student success have been ongoing and year-long. Throughout the year, we've collaborated with VHS to ensure a successful transition for our eighth grade students to ninth grade. As you heard earlier, we recently completed our spring student-led conferences and are in the final stages of gathering more feedback from students and families so we can make it even more meaningful next year. We continue to utilize our PBIS team and school-wide expectations to guide our work in making BCS a positive learning environment. And lastly, K-five teachers have done an amazing job this year, and the staff have been an integral part of that work as well, continuing to work hard on their development of clear learning intentions and success criteria. All of this work supports student learning and towards specific standards, as evidenced by our standards-based report cards and connects directly with our VPS Portrait of a Graduate.
Our goal, too, is about creating a caring culture, foster responsive caring and inclusive culture and a collaborative relationship. So again, at the district level, excuse me. All of our activities have been ongoing, and these are what you see, PK-12, very similar to what was presented at mid-year, and then VHS and BCS will report more specifically.
You know, so, you know, the, the caring piece, you know, is also interwoven into those, those big structural pieces that we have in the school, that flexible connections piece, where we did all sorts of, you know, and not just academic activities, but, you know, other things to support students during the tricky times. And that Team Twenty-Five piece, again, wasn't just academic support, it was social emotional support, and even a huge boost in communication to parents with the newsletters that they did every month.
And at BCS, we take, obviously, the similar to the high school tremendous pride and our caring culture that we've established, and we work hard to build upon that work that we've done in the past. We have done this by continuing to include inclusive language and titles in our classrooms through building teacher-student relationships with learning experiences like the student-led conferences and by encouraging students to think and explore their future at VHS and beyond with our eighth grade career day, which is tomorrow, and by other interest-building activities as well. So we're super excited about the career day tomorrow, and BCS is a special place.
Our third goal, talent development. I've spoken to this already in many ways. Can't do this work without our academic leaders, our administrative team. This really is a collaborative effort and no kidding aside, this year has been, been a challenge to make sure we're carving out that time and continuing our learning. And I, again, thank everybody and especially the, the motivation to continue learning through these times. We do have a ongoing PD calendar that for the past two years, we've left it more flexible than set just to be responsive to our needs. But the PLCs at each building are aligned and also flexible for what needs are going on in the building, but always with an eye to our district goals and building goals. Another piece is team. I have to say, we have quite a few new teachers, and the team program is a required program, but it is also part of a PD opportunity where teachers are able to visit each other's classrooms. It's very reflective. So we are very active in the team program, and we have a very supportive district-wide PDEC committee. At both buildings, one key piece has been this revised PLC schedule and structure, as I had mentioned earlier. This has been the year to be responsive. You know, at the You know, at the middle level, Daryl really needing to dig in and make sure those student-led conferences happen along with all of the other work. And the high school to to address the ever-changing needs of as we get back to this post-pandemic uh school. So that has been an ongoing work. Uh so sometimes we give these very big picture ideas, and so we're gonna take a a pause in this presentation to highlight um something that's very important to all of the administrators and teachers in this district about diversity, equity, and inclusion. And our work, while we are talking about this strategic plan, was part of our last strategic plan. That has been a goal, an embedded goal in everything that we've been doing. And so our professional learning that happened prior to twenty twenty, and some of it's still ongoing, has included the mastery approach. And you can see our topics with our supporting organizations. So this is not learning that we just pick a random group. These are very highly recognized and vetted groups, reputable. And the nice thing about it, there've been some long, ongoing relationships. So it is not the many, many years ago, I know, when I started teaching, uh, you know, you get the one and done, and that's it for your for your PD. These have been, this has been ongoing. And I I do want to emphasize that. So as you can see, our topics that you've heard at many board meetings, mastery approach, portrait of a graduate, culturally responsive practices, student-engaged assessments, the workshop model, um and I do want to say workshop model, and that's K twelve. We've we've looked at that not just as an elementary practice. There have been open choice book clubs, and there's the support of from Crec from being part of Open Choice. And as mentioned before, Team Module Five. I do want to mention this specifically because there's been a dramatic change in this in that the CSDE also supported districts with culturally responsive learning in that um in Team Module Five, teachers are given a scenario where um how you might respond. And this is for our beginning teachers. It's an induction program. And districts have options as to how we participate in it. In Bolton, we started a few years ago where every other year, all staff members get to participate in this conversation. So it's reminder of how important we are as educators and how really keeping the forefront uh the best practices for dealing with all of our students. So uh while the new teachers get specific PD, all of our teachers get to participate in this particular module. Uh since twenty twenty into our new strategic plan, we've continued much of before. But there's been some more specific work. Uh we've had world events where staff asked for book studies. We continued our work with diversity, equity, inclusion. Our LMC uh teachers, both buildings or both librarians have worked with their association and equity audit for ongoing understandings, and they are a great resource for all of our teachers. We've attended very specific institutes and with equity work being embedded in all of our new learning. The important piece with this in Bolton, when we think about equity, we're not just talking about racial equity. We need to think about all students, and that's really very important for us to highlight. And so this is not a one and done deal. This is about having conversations, continuing our learning, and making sure that this work is deeply embedded in everything we do because we have to do what's right and best for all kids. I don't know where I got that line from, but it is embedded in my soul, and it really is uh what we need to what's really at the basis of all of this work. So again, as you can see, trauma-sensitive practices, certainly we've heard that in the news, but also just, so we're also doing it, SEL um and then the ongoing EL training, English learners. So what does that look like in the classroom? So we don't just adopt any program. And I know we try to make these meetings a big overview, but we think about these topics when we're picking our resources. So uh you know, our Ready Math program is very rich with um resources to help us understand how to best provide instruction for all learners. Likewise, reading and writing workshop approach has a very long history with culturally responsive practices, even back to the nineteen nineties. So that's taking us way back to way back. And you know, just this idea where literature is our it our way to experience the world, our windows, our mirrors, our sliding glass doors. And I'm not gonna, I'm gonna have to look because, you know, I'm talking fast and trying to give you as much information. But it was really um Dr. Rude- Rudin Sims Bishop who who really got that concept going and has been the foundation of work. And sometimes we don't mention it because really this practice has been around. And one of the challenges that we always have to remember as educators, things become embedded, but sometimes we have to get back to the roots as to why we do these things. So really, our our strategic plan allows us to always revisit the important conversations for that. Uh again, listing the different curricular implications that we've seen, how we've changed our book talks, the choice of the second step program, support the students with SEL. And again, anytime we make a major uh text selection, resource selection, this is considered um at both levels. And then at the high school, we have other opportunities for things such as the unity and connection activities. And um certainly, we were able to celebrate a few years there when the computer science program was new and the state celebrated us for really um promoting women and girls in the computer sciences. So again, this work does not escape any of us. And over the next, I'm not gonna read all of the next two two slides. So at BCS, the programs are more universal, things such as the Ready Math program, our workshop approach and and resources. At the high school, it's more course embedded. So I'll chatter just a little bit and let you peruse uh what the teachers have chosen to share about ways they're making very conscious efforts. And this is not an all-inclusive list, please, by any means. But these are some ways in which teachers are highlighting um some of our marginalized voices or or coming into ideas and so that we we provide an accurate uh picture for our students and making sure we're representing all of our students in a way that they can access materials and ideas. So next slide, Mr. Misselli. And I think the only subject area I did leave out was our PE and health department. Certainly, this is a topic that does come up in health. Um again, not having an academic leader, I didn't have somebody to lean into for this, but certainly, uh you know, there is plenty here for us to consider. And I do thank uh the board by my subcommittee for asking questions and making sure that we are thinking about all of our students because again, um I said it earlier this evening, and I'm very, I feel honored to be able to end my career in a district where students, all students are um welcomed and held to an expectation so that they can succeed and enjoy a life that is um ahead of them. So thank you for everybody's support. I don't believe, do we have anything else up the next slide? I'm not sure. I don't think we do for that for that. So our last goal, resource stewardship. I may turn over to Superintendent Heck because this really is her purview. Uh but certainly, all of us, this is a team effort. So with that, I thank the board profusely for your time. Happy to answer questions after this about any piece I presented. Um but that concludes my very long report and maybe last time.
Thank you, Sarah, very much. So as the board knows, we um have had an ongoing budget process that begins in September. And we have done pre and post-COVID analysis of our programs, technology, and other resources. That was done back in the fall. Uh we do an annual review of purchased resources. That's an ongoing thing that we do. Uh we do do zero-based budgeting. Um we have applied for and continue to receive grants uh each year. And um you know, do our very best to be good stewards of the community's money, for sure. Any questions? Chris?
I I don't have a question. I just wanted to appreciate or express my appreciation uh for Sarah. I've been fortunate to be a member of the the Curriculum Subcommittee since I joined the board uh over many years ago. And as a new board member, uh being able to ask many, many questions of Sarah and have really thoughtful discussions with her um has really helped me learn um so much about the education process. And it's been really my pleasure to to be able to work with her with these last last year. So all the best on your retirement, Sarah, and thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate that. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Anyone else?
I I'd just like to start the second look Chris has just said and just say, Sarah, it's also been a pleasure working with you, and I'm just so happy to see how the curriculum and instruction in Bolton has been implemented because and designed because it really does follow excellent practices. And um and I know, I think I know. And um so I I do want to express my appreciation for everything that you do and how you've been a real leader in the school district. So thank you.
Thank you, Ria. It's been great working with you, and it's so much fun talking about educational things with you. And I thank you for your resources.
I think Kristen Ria said a lot, but we would, we have to repeat, you are just amazing. We are going to miss you. You've been quite an asset to the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Agree with what everybody else said. We haven't worked together directly too too much, but uh I can feel your impact through the successes of the students. So I enjoy your retirement. Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Ben. And thank you, everybody. That's good.
Exactly.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um there'll be more commentary about Sarah's retirement at the June meeting. Um I will not be making commentary this evening because I need to get through the rest of this meeting tonight, if that's okay. Uh because I'm gonna have a hard time with the June meeting, I can tell you that. So that concludes our report this evening. Sarah, thank you very much. Joe, Daryl, thank you all very much. Chair O'Neill, it's all yours, sir.
Thank you, everybody. Uh we don't have any unfinished business tonight. Um we'll move on to new business. We have resignations.
We do. I have a few to report on this evening. Um Special Education Teacher Adam Jodyne has uh along with Paco Ruiz and Food Service Manager Jackie O'Brien have resigned. Um Adam and Paco will finish out the year with us. I would like to thank them for their dedicated service to the Bolton Public Schools, and they will be greatly missed.
Thank you. We have a new course next that is ECE Elementary Discrete Mathematics.
Yes. Boy, I thought it was done. Renee Midford was um supposed to be presenting this course this evening. And uh so Mr. Misselli, I might be leaning into you a little bit to make sure I don't miss anything with this. Uh so we did present a new course uh proposal to the Curriculum Subcommittee at our meeting for um the um high school to add an elective, a UConn ECE course in uh elementary discrete mathematics. This course, uh like I said earlier, a staff member, Renee Midford, has to have special certification. And she, when she was at an AP Statistics meeting, she was listening to the requirements for this course, and it was all of two different, two additional units compared to um our uh contemporary math topics course. And so she asked, hey, can I add, make it extend a course that we already have that it's board-approved? Uh it does not require a textbook. It has an online resource, and it does add two extra units that and at a faster and more in uh intense or more rigorous topics for the college credit and will be available as a junior elective and is one that guidance will be able to look at as once this course gets into our cycle for students having an additional math AP opportu- or and math ECE opportunity as well. Did I miss anything, Mr. Misselli, or any?
Fantastic job as always.
Oh, thank you.
So we're hoping for course approval tonight, everybody.
So I can make a motion to approve the ECE Elementary Discrete Mathematics course.
Second, Sue.
Chris and Sue, do we have any more questions or commentary about this course?
I'd just say uh again, uh thank you to Ms. Midford for recognizing that this would be a relatively easy course to add and would be of great benefit to our students and just taking the initiative to get get certified. I think it's a a great, great addition for for our high schoolers. So thank you.
I'd just like to echo Chris also that uh you know that I love minimal budgetary impacts, extra courses, and I also love more math courses. Uh so great job. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose? Or abstaining? I think that was everybody. Um next, we have a first read on grade three to five spelling program, Sunday Essentials.
Yes, and that is not a typo. It is Sunday's uh essentials, Sunday Essential Spelling. Uh it's been a while since we have updated our uh spelling program. Uh currently, we are using the Scott Forstman Reading Street Program and uh would like to update to a more uh relevant program that is aligned with what we know about instructional practices for early literacy, word work vocabulary development. It's not just learning a list of words to memorize. It's embedded in in supporting both reading and writing. So our uh English Language Arts Committee at the elementary school did do a comparison of three programs and settled with this program. Uh we do have familiarity with the Sunday Spelling Program because uh we do use some of the resources in our intervention program, uh which makes another, an additional alignment uh for all learners with this. The program, uh we knew this was a program that we would like to consider updating. The funds for this already are allocated in a grant. So again, that is a uh impact, a financial impact that we have already accounted for i- in our grant programs. So this evening, we would like to propose a first read. And for the community, should they want to preview any piece of this, would need to contact me at the Board of Ed so I can make arrangements for that.
Thank you very much for making you made you work hard tonight, going out.
Last time.
Okay. Is there any questions about this? All right. Uh do we have any future business?
No.
All right. Uh then at this time, I'm looking for a motion to go into executive session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation and also to invite Superintendent Peck.
So moved. And?
Thank you, Sue and Ria. Any questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All right.
Recording stopped.
We went to executive session. Thank you, everyone else for coming this evening.